Good evening, everyone. Salem City Council will hold a joint public hearing with the planning board in the city council chambers tonight, Wednesday, April 16th.
My sorry. My fault.
Start again. Here we go. Salem City Council will hold a joint public hearing with the planning board in Salem City Council chambers tonight, Wednesday, April 16th, 2025, at 6:30 PM for the purpose of discussing three zoning ordinance amendments relative to flood hazard overlay, accessory dwelling units, and the Halloween parking overlay district. In person shall be the primary method of public access, a secondary method of public access may be provided if technologically feasible through the Salem Access Television and remotely through Zoom. This public hearing is here to provide interested persons with the opportunity to comment on Absent from the city council is Councilor Davis. All of the members present. Also in attendance tonight is Mayor Pangallo, Amanda Giancolli, Tom Devine, and Christina Hodge. At this time, I would like to turn over the hearing process to the planning board so that they can open their meeting and introduce their panel members. Chair Ryder.
Council President, we will take a roll call. Jonathan Burke.
President.
Zach Counter.
President.
Tom Fury.
President.
All sides.
President.
Sarah Tarbet.
President.
Turiel.
President.
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 Thank you. Again, we have three zoning ordinances on the agenda tonight. We will be addressing each one, one at a time. There'll be a presentation on each one. After discussion by both city council and planning board members, those in favor or those opposed will have the opportunity to speak. We ask those that speak, when they take the microphone, please talk directly into the microphone so that folks at home and in Zoom land can hear you, and also to state your name and address for the record. If need be, because of there being three items on the agenda, if it does go late, we will continue this to another date if need be.
We have the flood hazard overlay district.
Mayor, leave us to Devine taking the podium and speaking to this item.
Are you ready for me, or is there anything else you have to read?
You're to go.
Okay. Tom Devine, Senior Planner from the Salem Planning Department. I am here to present a proposed revision to the FHOD, Flood Hazard Overlay District Zoning Ordinance. This is mainly to update the reference to flood maps that have been revised since the ordinance was last amended, but there are some other changes that I would describe as minor that the State Flood Plane Office has requested that we make at the same time. Next slide, please. Last year, the city council adopted a fairly comprehensive zoning change for flood management and flood resiliency. The main part of that was the C-Rod, the Coastal Resiliency Overlay District, that requires development to be resilient to projected 2070 flood risk. At the same time, along with that, the city revised its FHOD ordinance to comply with updated state requirements and to streamline the FHOD permit review. Next slide, please. So, again, the main change in the ordinance is to update the reference to the new maps that go into effect July 8, 2025, and I will provide some details about what the changes From time to time, FEMA updates the maps when there's new technical information. We would have liked to have done this last year with the rest of the major update, but we never really know when these map changes for sure are going to come. And I want to say that these map changes, they are pretty limited in Salem. There's no homes added to the flood zones or removed, and nobody's flood zones, nobody's flood insurance is changing. The only thing this really does is keep the city eligible for residents to be able to buy federal flood insurance. So the other updates that the State Flood Management Office asked for are to the text. So, one is to add A-zone, the letter A-zone, to the zones in which the FHOD applies for recreational vehicles. And another change is to add the requirement for adequate drainage for subdivision and development proposals. Counselor Musillo had asked me by email the right question, which is, why isn't adequate drainage defined in the ordinance? And the explanation for that is, we're using this model ordinance text that the state requires we use, and they don't define adequate drainage in that text. However, for the Inspection Services Department to issue an FHOD approval, all other applicable permits have to be obtained, and that includes permits that do have measurable and clearly defined requirements for drainage, such as the subdivision requirements, the Wetlands Protection Act, local wetlands ordinance, stormwater standards, and I'd say also the engineering department's rules and regulations. So although adequate drainage isn't really used in a meaningful way in the ordinance, it's what we are required to use, but adequate drainage is defined in a measurable way from, in other permits that somebody has to obtain before getting their FHOD approval. And then there are some really negligible text changes that the state asked for as Some changes to the language around the reference to the flood maps. And where the ordinance mentions requirements for notifying state and federal officials in some circumstances, we've been asked to delete the addresses of their offices, because I suppose those change. And my understanding is, these text changes are all things that the State Flood Management Office unintentionally omitted from their model ordinance that we based the ordinance off of last year. And there's also another change that I have requested since submitting this to city council. I propose now that the ordinance go into effect the day that the maps go into effect, rather than upon adoption. So that would be July 8, 2025. I don't think doing it any other way would make sense. Next slide, please. Why are the maps changing? FEMA did a regional watershed analysis for inland flood zones that resulted in some flood zone changes in Essex County. And I'll reiterate that no homes or other structures are added to the FEMA flood zone where they're changed. The changes are peculiar. They're limited to inland waterways and wetlands. Next slide, please. And I can show you the limited areas where the changes are happening, just these three places. On the left, at Spring Pond, behind the Highland Ave Walmart, that surface water is now part of the flood zone. In the middle, Thompson's Meadow, what's shown in blue is the existing flood zone. The changes are shown in black, where the flood zone's expanding, and green, where it's contracting. And to the right, the South Salem Ponds, that's between the YMCA and behind Staples in Vinin Square, Legs Hill Pond and Tedesco Pond, those are surface water bodies that will become flood zones. Next slide, please. So I want to thank the planning board and the council for the chance to present this and wrap up with resources for homeowners. Although we're not making any changes that will affect homeowners in this revision, homeowners are still very much affected by the existing flood zones and the requirements attached to them. So anyone can see the flood maps at msc.fema.gov and find flood insurance information at floodsmart.gov, and there's my contact information. So that's my presentation. I'm going to hand it back to the council.
Thank you, Tom. For discussion amongst council members, any councils have any questions or comments at this point? Seeing none. Chair Reader, I turn it over to you for your board.
Chair, does anyone on the planning board have any questions or comments for Mr.? Seeing none.
Is there anyone else in the public appearing in favor? Or anyone else appearing opposed that would like to speak? Seeing none. Counselor Hapworth. That's right, anybody in Zoom land, I'm sorry. We have no one in Zoom land wishing to speak. Counselor Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to refer to the planning board for their recommendations.
Do you first like to move that the hearing be closed?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Move the hearing be closed.
Thank you.
I don't have the script.
We'll share it. Chair Reader, would you like to have your board close the public hearing also?
Yes. Thank you, President. Oh, could we have a yay vote for closing?
Counselor Hapworth also moves to close the public hearing. All those in favor? All those opposed? Seeing none. Counselor Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to refer to the planning board for their recommendation.
Counselor Hapworth moves to have this referred to the planning board for review and recommendation. All those in favor? Those opposed? Chair Reader.
We also need to close the public. Hi. So, in the name of this, we close the public hearing. Thank you.
Very good. Second item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
We have the zoning ordinance amendment relative to accessory dwelling units.
The mayor for us. Amanda?
Yeah.
Appearing for the planning department, Amanda Giancolli.
Again, my name is Amanda Giancolli. I'm with the planning department. Appreciate the opportunity to speak about ADUs with you tonight. With me tonight is also Attorney Robin Stein, who has assisted us with this ordinance. I also note that our zoning enforcement officer, building inspector, who's not here tonight, was very hopeful in putting this together and making these changes, along with our building inspectors, so appreciate their time and effort on this ordinance. So I'm just going to go through, this is an outline of, to give you a flow of what we're going to talk about tonight. I'll talk about the purpose of the ordinance. We've been talking about accessory dwelling units for many years in Salem, so why am I back in front of you tonight? I'll explain that. There are these new state requirements referred to as the Affordable Homes Act and Regulations. So we'll go over that. And then there are three separate amendments that we're going to talk about, and so we'll take these separately, because they are three separate sections. The first amendment's to Section 3.1, that's the use table, then Section 3.2.4 regarding dimensional standards, and then Section 3.2.8, which, as you see in the draft zoning, it's a replace, delete and replace. And then I will say, with each section, after I give my short presentation on that section, I'll hand it back over to the city council and the planning board for discussion and questions, members of the public for public comment, and then would ask that the city council and planning board vote on that section before we move on to the next one. So the purpose of the zoning amendments before you tonight, the key reason we're here is to bring it into alignment with Section 8 of Chapter 150 of the Acts of 2024, and this is also referred to as the Affordable Homes Act. Most of the ordinance, you'll see, it very much does stick with the ordinance that we have, but we're changing it on the edges to make sure that we comply with the state requirements. Another purpose we're being here is, since we're here for changing it to align with state law, there is some cleanup, and so we want to take the opportunity to do that. But I want to keep in mind that we're trying to keep this very similar to our current ordinance, because we've talked about it for many years. It's had a lot of community conversation, a lot of vetting, and so we want to continue to meet the goal of increasing the supply and diversity of housing options. So we're looking at it through that lens. The Affordable Homes Act, and you may see this in my slideshow as AHA as well, just to add to our acronym soup. It's legislation that was signed by Governor Healy towards the end of 2024, August of 2024, and it actually amends the zoning act. It amends Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3. And Section 3 is where you find protected uses. So in that section, you'll also see protected uses for things like agriculture or religious and educational uses. So ADUs was inserted into that section. And so sometimes you'll hear communities or other folks talk about ADUs as a protected use ADU, because it is now considered a protected use in Section 3. The rest of the items are just good to keep in mind as we talk about the proposed revisions, because it's really to fit within this sort of box. The approval process is dictated by the Affordable Homes Act now, and it is very clear, we cannot require a special permit or any discretionary approval for accessory dwelling units, whether they're attached, detached. Every single-family district needs to allow one accessory dwelling unit as of right. And when I say as of right, that means that a homeowner can just pull a building permit, as long as you meet the dimensional requirements, they go forward and pull a building permit, it doesn't need to go to a board for review. And then allowed districts, where can you put these protected use accessory dwelling units? The Act requires that an ADU be allowed in any single-family zoning district. The Act itself does not define what a single-family zoning district is, but the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities has put forth guideline, regulations, and those regulations include definitions, including the definition of a single-family district. And it defines a single-family district as any district where single-family homes are allowed by right or by special permit, regardless of how it's named. So it is very clear that that is the requirement. If the single-family home's allowed, an ADU needs to be allowed. For dimensional standards, the ADU dimensional standards cannot be more restrictive than a single-family home or an accessory structure, whichever is more permissive. And then use and occupant restrictions are described in the Affordable Homes Act as well, in that communities cannot require owner occupancy or require a family relationship between the tenant and the owner. So there's no use restrictions on the accessory dwelling unit. So again, these are just the things that we kept in mind as we went through the zoning ordinance amendments. And think about them through, one of the lenses I thought about it through was, you know, if we can't apply this to a single-family home, we can't apply it to an ADU. So this is the first section that we'll take up, and it's amendments to Section 3.1, which is our use table. The current ordinance established two different uses. It's affordable accessory dwelling units that are attached and those that are within an existing principal dwelling. So this proposes to strike those and just have one type of accessory dwelling unit that's subject to the new Section 3.2.8. And again, as I just mentioned, we need to allow it in all of the districts that allow single-family homes, so that's why you see it in R.C., R1, R2, R3, B5, and NRCC. And you may notice B1 has a N on it, and I appreciate folks who have noticed that, because I did not notice this at first, and I made an error. That should have a yes on it. And so there are a couple ways to handle that, because ADUs are currently allowed in the B1, because the state law is in effect. And so sometime, well, usually our course is, we only consider amendments to the use table that are identified in our legal ad. So if we wanted, you could, we could have a new legal ad for this, and we have a couple joint public hearings, a couple zoning amendments that are coming up in the pipeline in the next month or so, so we could have another public hearing to add the yes on there. The other option is, this is a requirement of state law, and this is how it was described, and so the planning board could recommend that the B1 be changed to a Y, city council can move forward with it that way. So you have the choice, if you want to be consistent with how we usually do the legal ads and stick within that strict guidelines, we can do that, but you do have the option to change it as well. So just something to think about as you're considering this. But that concludes Section 3.1, and I'll talk all about the rest of the parts of the ADU, but this part is, again, dictated by state requirements. It's required in any district that allows a single family. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And I want to turn it back over to the city council and planning board for discussion and public comment.
Thank you, Amanda. In reference to Amendment 3.1, under discussion, Counselor Musillo.
Thank you, President. For you to Amanda. Amanda, can you talk a little bit more about the regulations, how they are written, what kind of a process they go through? Because I think that's where the most questions come up, is this whole definition of where a single-family home is allowed, and some people read that strictly as an R1, but the regulations make it very clear that it's any residential area. So can you talk a little bit more about the process and how that works statewide?
I may need to ask Robin to also talk about the process, but it's, the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities developed draft regulations first, and they posted them for public comment. So it's just done at the state level instead of the local level, but it's very similar, where their legal team and policy folks developed these regulations. They had several meetings to identify what needs to be, what communities want, members of the public want addressed in those regulations, things that need clarity. So, you know, city staff has provided input, many community members participated at throughout the Commonwealth, but the state produces the regulations, they posted it for public comment, and then takes that public comment and creates the final regulations. It's all done at the state level.
Thank you. Maybe we need Robin up here, because I just wanted this very clear to everyone, how, what gives them the right to do this in state law, how they can interpret a law that has been passed and has language like this, how, you know, how the regulations come into effect. I just want everyone to be clear on how this works.
Good evening, everyone. Robin Stein from KP Law. We've been assisting the city with the zoning ordinance in particular, and I think it's an excellent question. It's helpful for people to understand. So, as you said, there was a statute passed that amended the zoning act to include protections for accessory dwelling units, and then the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities is the state agency that's authorized to then pass regulations to implement that law. And so their regulations by law are supposed to be within the scope of the law itself. So it's kind of like, we have the law, and then we regulate down. They can't broaden that scope, but they have authority to further define provisions within that, and that's what they've done. So as Amanda said, they issued draft regulations, they took comment and had a public hearing on that, and then they issued final regulations, which are what we're working from. And some of what you've seen maybe in the evolution of this is, immediately when the law was passed, there was a six-month period before the ADU law became effective in February, and so we were working with a lot of communities to get ahead of it and figure out what we're doing, at the same time, we didn't have those final regulations. So there's been some changes, because we thought things were going to go a certain way, and the regulations came out differently, or, you know, it gave us a better understanding. But, for example, on this particular definition, my memory is that the original draft regulation actually said that it was any zoning district where a single family was allowed as of right by special permit or by variance. And so they got a lot of comment on that, because communities said, look, if we allow use variances, you're now essentially saying that our entire community is a single-family zoning district, and if we don't allow single families in an industrial district, for example, you know, that may be a problem. And so when the final definition came out, you did see they took that input and they changed it. So I know there are folks that still don't like the special permit reference and don't necessarily agree with that, but that is an example where you saw through that regulatory process that they did take in feedback and pull back on the definition.
Thank you. Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Proznowski. Thank you, and my question is to mostly Jill Stein here. When it comes to 48, Section 3, I know we have a precedent here in our city when it comes to challenging that, especially with agriculture. So I guess my hesitance with this is, when it comes to the city of Salem, and not necessarily this administration that would be in support of this, the city has a precedent of challenging what the actual state law of 48, Section 3, when it comes to exempt use has. So I'll just be very blunt with it. When it comes to the use of agriculture, that's been challenged by the city multiple times with legal precedent between two legal councils, KP Law, as well as Man and Man. So I guess my hesitant with this is, obviously, the intent of accessory dwelling units is there, but the city has a precedent of challenging what is the exempt use of 48, Section 3. So I know this administration's probably in full support of this and having accessory dwelling units, but I don't have much confidence when it comes to the city actually upholding when it comes to the actual state law. So that's just a comment I have personally, and I'm a little hesitant about it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President. I don't know if this is something you can answer, or Robin, or has to go to Beth. I do love talking about B1, but we had a meeting last year about allowable use, and then we had another meeting this year, where we voted on allowable use again, and we had to wait till the calendar year ends. So do we have to wait for any change to the B1 for the calendar year to change, because we're reviewing the same subject, basically?
No, we can, we can move forward with it now. That would be if we proposed a change to B1 and then wanted to change, do a different change to B1.
Okay. But this is just changing the allowable use?
Yes.
Or in category of B1?
Correct.
Any further discussion? I'll turn it over to the planning board. Chair Reader.
Thank you, Council President. Are there any questions or comments from the planning board? Mr. Fury? Mr. Fury.
Mr. Chair. Mr. President. Accessory units.
Sorry about that technical difficulties.
Thank you very much. Accessory units is one tool on the toolbox for the public housing, housing for families. And it has a very human face. I was in three of those units over the years, over the years. I adopted, I took in five children from Department of Children's Services, and they were in 40 different houses, 40 different families, over the years. And the one boy that I had at the very beginning, 15-years-old, looked at me in one of these accessory units, and he heard the family upstairs, and he met the family upstairs, and we became members of their family, of a nice household. He looked me straight in the eye, and he says, is this what families are all about? He was in 15 different homes. He was only 15-years-old. Department of Social Services bounced him out. He came to me, and I says, guess what? Number 16 is your happy number, your lucky number, your only number. And that house provided me the ability to take in young people. And they were really profoundly affected by it, by living with families. They became families. We had family meals with them, holiday meals with them. We used their property. We shoveled their lawns. We, pardon me, we cut their lawns, we shoveled. So we were part of the family. So ACUs really have a human face. They're only for a small number of units. There's not going to flood the city of Salem with accessory units, but it's going to make an impact, even if it makes one. It made an impact on my family. It made a difference in my family. They're better kids. This is a better city to have these units available. They see the real world, these kids, and I appreciate the Planning Department moving ahead with this. And it really has a human face. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Josh.
Thank you. Just a couple of observations on this that are pretty straightforward, I think. One is on the, we're maintaining, I know we have to get rid of the, from the state law, we have to get rid of the affordability requirement, but we do have the ability to preserve the tax incentive that we're putting in place. And I'd like to know what kind of percentage has been settled on for that, because that's something that was after, you know, what, how much of an exemption would be given to an owner to do this? Because I still want to see us incentivize affordability for the renter as much as possible on it. And then the other observation that I want to make, that I'm very happy to see, is that short-term rentals remain this, because remain prohibited. And I think that's something that we need, especially in a city like this where short-term rental has been such an issue. Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Seeing no other comments from the Planning Board, I have, I did not see your hand. Jonathan, please proceed.
Just a really quick comment. So I was proud to advocate for the Affordable Homes Act last year and the year before. I think it's an important change and reform, an ability to allow EDUs to take hold across Massachusetts, from the construction side, allowing the EU industry to really take hold, but also allowing the mortgage industry more support in the financing of EDUs. I think by cleaning up some of the requirements that municipalities are allowed or not allowed to put on EDUs allows lenders a little bit more freedom of flexibility to actually loan out these products. They're really expensive to build. I think a lot of folks here have seen that, and Collins made a comment on that before. So whatever we can do to make the costs cheaper for homeowners who shouldn't actually build these, even if they're for family members.
To add to their housing.
Add to their property to allow residents to bring in a child or a newborn living on their property. The restrictions that are in place can still prevent a bank from lending on that product. So I think these are a solid reform, in addition to our housing toolkit in Salem and across Massachusetts. So look forward to this.
Thank you, Jonathan. Not seeing any more. I guess I have a question through you to Amanda. Are you, is the Planning Department looking for a motion from the Planning Board in support of one of the two ways to make the correction to the B1 tonight? And if so, in what form ought that occur? Or is that something that's solely coming from the Council to us to consider?
That's okay. So that can be discussed when you make your recommendation. You're welcome to discuss it tonight as well. I'm interested in hearing comments from members of the public, because you want to take all of that into consideration when you do your recommendation. And so all of that can weigh in on what you would recommend to the Council and how we approach that change. And then while I have the floor, can I also respond to the rent restriction too? So that's handled in Section 3.2.8 that we'll discuss two slides, a couple slides from now. But the use table does reference, this is accessory dwelling units, subject to the requirements of Section 3.2.8. And what we're proposing in there, as noted, is it's not a requirement for rent restriction because we can't do that for a single-family home, so we cannot do that for an ADU. But there is an option because the city has a special act that allows for us to have a rent restriction on affordable accessory dwelling units. The special act states that the rent restriction is up to, it's 70% of the fair market as established by HUD for Salem annually. So that number does change on an annual basis, but it's at that 70% fair market rent adjusted for the bedrooms.
Thank you. Councilor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Prasnisky. Through you to Amanda. I just have a couple of quick questions to clarify the requirements that are, actually not the requirements, sorry, the 3.2.4 accessory buildings and structures. So number one excludes accessory dwelling units, which enables building accessory dwelling units in front yard or within any side yard or of a corner lot, correct?
Yeah.
That's what this edit means.
We'll discuss the 3.2.4.
I'm jumping ahead. Okay.
Yes, it's okay.
I have questions for you when we get there.
Almost there.
Thank you.
Council, any further discussion on the amendments to Section 3.1? Councilor Slott.
Thank you, President Prasnisky. I just went for uber clarity. The edits in front of us now, we're combining the accessory use available zones into one line, and really, the change is adding B5. Ideally, it would be adding B5 and B1. That's the summation of the change, correct?
Correct. B5 is not in our current ordinance as allowing accessory dwelling units, and so we're proposing to add that and to add B1 if it's the will of the body to do that through this process.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will take public comment on this particular amendment. Is there anyone else appearing in favor that would like to speak? Anyone in Zoom land? Anyone in opposition? Take the microphone, please. State your name and address.
Justin Whittier, Ten River Street. I'm not sure to what degree my remarks refer to different portions of this, so if you don't mind, I'll just give the remarks, and I'll be done. You won't have to hear me again. Salem has a good ADU ordinance on the books, one that has protections for neighborhoods and affordability for renters. Some of the changes, some changes have to be made to comply with state law, but the proposal before you goes way beyond that. It would strip affordability and neighborhood protections and benefit only developers and absentee landlords. We shouldn't, and we don't need to do this. The legislature's change to the state law is crystal clear, and it's common sense. Make ADU creation easier and do it in areas that are the most restrictive and have the most space available for housing creation, single-family districts. That's why the legislature applied this change to single-family districts and only to single-family districts. The EO HLC and its guidelines gives a garbled and frankly ludicrous definition of single-family zoning district, in essence saying anywhere and everywhere, because they redefine single-family zoning district as anywhere where a single-family use is allowed. This is clearly not what the legislature intended. If they had intended this change to apply anywhere the use is allowed, they would have written it that way. They didn't. They said, "Single-family zoning districts and zoning districts have a definite legal, geographical meaning." The EO HLC has the authority to issue guidelines, but not to utterly abrogate the law, which this redefinition would. Bottom line, you're not required to make all the changes in this proposal, not beyond single-family districts, and not even all there. Please keep our current ordinances on the books. Keep the two affordable accessory dwelling unit categories with their protections. Create an amended category for single-family districts, which makes any necessary changes. But also keep in mind that necessary changes, as the EO HLC itself says, mean that you're allowed to have reasonable regulations that serve a legitimate interest. Affordability is reasonable and legitimate. So is owner occupancy. So are height restrictions protecting trees and discontinuability. I urge you to do some real digging and thinking here. Stand up for renters in neighborhoods. This proposal would hurt us, and we don't need to do it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in chambers in opposition? Anyone in Zoom land? There is one.
Shai.
Shai, can you unmute yourself and go ahead? We are not hearing anything.
Good evening, Steve Kapantz. 23 was there yesterday. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. One, I would ask that you guys try to lean into your microphones a little. It was very difficult to hear things from the Planning Board. If we're fighting to continue remote meetings, it's important that we hear you. Second, when you read the state law, what the legislature passed, it seemed to be very narrow in saying, "single-family districts." Subsequent to that, the EO HLC broadened that definition by saying, "Well, if you allow single families in other districts like B1, B5, then therefore that also is a single-family district." I don't agree with it. We don't have to agree with it. It seems like we're headed down a road that if passed, we'll find out pretty quick, because there will be a legal precedent when somebody challenges it. And then the other point that I want to make, I continue to hear about, you know, rent control on these units, and that they're going to be affordable because they're at X percentage, 70% X, that was the max. As we consider, please remember, there is nothing in legislation, there is nothing in our city ordinances that says just because you have an affordable unit that it has to be rented to somebody that needs an affordable unit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kapantz. Anyone else in Zoom land? Seeing none, any further discussion from City Council on Amendment 3.1? Chair Reader, any further from your?
Thank you, Council Chair. That's the President. Josh Chirial, please.
Thank you. I have one, one thought that has, that came to me in the discussion of targets specifically at families, zoning districts, or at others where single-family is permitted use. And it's from my own. So I, I live in a single-family home in an R2 district, just to use that as an example. So if you took that assumption to its strictest point, then, and said only single-family specific districts, then my own single-family home, the only thing I could do with it would be turn it into a two-family by right. I couldn't though, if this, if that were the case, and if it were a single-family only, I couldn't add an ADU to it if that were the case. Just turn it into a straight two-family. And theoretically speaking, of course, I couldn't build a single-family home there today. I mean, it would, you know, practically, as a practical matter, yes, I could, but that's where, like, I understand the states in promulgating the regulations. I understand where they came to this from. So it's, so the interpretation, and I'd, you know, like to get Robin back up here to go into this a little bit, if she could, in any, so the difference between single-family district and districts where single-family is a by-right use, I think that's something we should be, make sure we have clarity on. Thank you.
Robin.
Josh. Anyone else? Jonathan?
Robin, go ahead.
Sure. Through you, and through you, Mr. Share. Again, this, the Affordable Homes Act itself authorized the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to adopt regulations to implement the ADU statute. The Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities has done that, and they include a definition of single-family zoning district that is any district in which single-family houses are allowed as of right or by special permit. That is the legal definition that we have, and that is the legal definition that I think that communities should work within unless and until it is challenged and a court says otherwise. So that is what we have. And to your point, yes, if somebody were to say, well, we think districts that only allow single-family housing or something like that, or single-family, it would exclude other districts where single families are currently allowed right now, along with more intense uses.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Seeing no further comments, back to you.
Okay. Thank you. City Council, any further discussion? Seeing none, Councilor Hapworth, would you like to close the public hearing? Make a move?
Okay. So we're going to go through each section, and then at the end, we'll do the vote for what we do with a public hearing. Little change of plan.
Go ahead on to Amendment 3.2.4.
Thank you. So this is a Section 3.2.4, which is regarding just essentially the dimensional requirements for section, dimensional requirements for accessory structures and buildings. And so the proposed ordinance keeps the same dimensional requirements, it just shifts them down to Section 3.2.8. This is the redline version of the text. And so you'll see, the amendments to Section 3.2.4 adds an exclusion of accessory dwelling units to the provision that prohibits accessory buildings or structures from being in any required front yard, side yard, or within any side yard of a corner lot. Again, that's because the accessory structure has the dimensional requirements that are less than the primary structure. It can't be more restrictive. And it removes the references to detached accessory structures. So I'm going to try to sum that up in this slide. So while, again, the dimensional requirements are no longer listed in 3.2.4, they all got shifted to Section 3.2.8. Those requirements are on the screen here. It's proposing a five-foot step back for the side lot line. Again, that's the same step back in the current ordinance for the side lot. A 10-foot step back to any other building on the same lot or in a budding lot. Again, that is the same requirement in the current ordinance, it's just shifted down. And then all the other dimensional requirements that are set forth in Section 4.1 would apply, which is the underlying zoning district. There are changes there because, particularly with height, where, and again, I'll talk about this in 3.2.8, but we cannot restrict the height to 18 feet or 1 and 1/2 stories as the current ordinance does, because a single-family home is not restricted as that way. So the protected use ADU has the same height requirements as the primary structure. So that is 3.2.4. Happy to take questions, discussion, public comment on the section. Happy to take questions, discussion, public comment on the section.
And Councils, Council of Watsonfeld.
Thank you for explaining that, Amanda. And I guess my question then is, if we, if we remove the words "and detached affordable accessory dwelling units" from number four under 3.2.4, do we then have to insert another statement excluding accessory dwelling units because accessory structures would be encompassing, would it not?
I see, I see what you're saying. So accessory structures, garages, shall not exceed 1 1/2 stories or 18 feet. Accessory dwelling units are there, has its own definition. We could, you could add in excluding accessory dwelling units so that it's transparent and clear. It doesn't need to be there, but it could be added.
But you don't think it needs to be?
No, because accessory dwelling units have their own definition, and then they will have their own height requirements in Section 4. It will, in the...
It'll get covered off.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Chair Reader.
Thank you, Council President. Anyone on the planning board with questions or comments? Seeing none, back to you.
Seeing no further discussion on 3.2.4. Moving to 3.2.8. Amanda?
Do you want to take public comment now or wait till the end?
We'll wait, because it's all combined in one discussion.
Sure. Okay. So the next section is 3.2.8, and this one is a deletion and a replacement. And it's, a lot of the language is the same and very similar. Some of it had to be massaged to make sure it stays in compliance. There are specific requirements that were revised or added, and then some things that remain the same. So I'll go through those items. The requirements that were revised or added are on that left-hand side of the slide. The first item is we revised the definition, and the definition is just taken directly from the Affordable Homes Act. So it's just using that exact definition. Again, we previously talked about, we cannot restrict owner occupancy, because that is precluded in the Affordable Homes Act, so it's striking the requirement that the accessory dwelling unit or the primary structure be occupied by the property owner. The current ordinance requires a special permit for new detached structures, and so this removes that requirement, because, again, we cannot require special permits. The current ordinance also has a limitation on the net removal of trees, and that's when you have, you know, a new detached structure, if there was an existing tree, for that to be mitigated. But we can't do that, we don't do that for single-family homes, so we cannot do that for the accessory dwelling unit, and so that would be removed. And then there's some, so all of those items that I just went through are requirements of the Affordable Homes Act. The removement of requirements regarding termination, there's a whole section in the ordinance regarding termination in the event that the accessory dwelling unit fails to comply with the requirements. That is just cleanup from the prior ordinance. This is sort of a carryover language from when this was an affordable living area ordinance. And it's really regarding, you know, it looks at, it considers units that are attached and removing the kitchen if, and that started when there was a requirement for a family member or caretaker to live there, and if that no longer was the case, those things would need to be removed. But it doesn't make sense in this context. I looked at it with the Inspection Services Department, and they just didn't see a situation where termination would apply in this way, and so recommended removing that. And then, again, revise the height for maximum, the maximum height for detached ADUs, which it would be the underlying zoning district. The items in orange that are bold, I'm going to talk about in more detail, so I'll get to those next. The requirements that remain the same are on the right-hand side. The current ordinance does not require parking for an accessory dwelling unit, and so we're proposing to keep that, not have parking requirement for accessory dwelling units. The current ordinance already has size limitations. It limits the ADU to 900 square feet, or 50% of the size of the principal dwelling, whichever is smaller. And so that remains the same. You'll see the language, again, that's one of those that would just massage a little to make sure it lines up exactly with the Affordable Homes Act, but the intent in the implementation of it is the same. We still have a requirement regarding single ownership. And what I mean by that is, the accessory unit cannot be sold or transferred separately from the principal dwelling. It is accessory to that principal dwelling, and so needs to stay in that single ownership. And then the current ordinance and the proposed ordinance maintains that short-term rentals are prohibited in the accessory dwelling unit. The location restrictions, that's the step-back requirements. Again, they were previously in 3.2.4, but wanted to shift everything down to 3.2.8 in trying to make this really transparent on what the requirements for ADUs are. So as previously discussed, we're proposing five feet from the side lot line, 10 feet from any other building on the same lot or in a budding lot, same requirements in the current ordinance. So these are those three orange items I'm going to go through one by one. The current ordinance has a rent restriction, and that limits the rent of the accessory dwelling unit to 70% of the fair market rent. And as I previously mentioned, that is not a requirement we can include in here, it's not a reason, not considered a reasonable regulation, because it's not something we apply to single-family homes. So the proposed ordinance, it's really important to include some kind of mechanism to have an option for an affordable, a restricted affordable accessory dwelling unit. And so that's where we propose an option. If a homeowner wants to take up that option, they apply annually to the assessor for the tax exemption. And with that application, they provide a copy of their, their rent agreement that shows what the rent is to demonstrate it's 70% of fair market rent or less, to be eligible for that tax exemption on the accessory dwelling unit. The multiple ADUs is an option, and I should say, the rent restriction I just talked about, that's not a requirement of the Affordable Homes Act, that's an option that we can add in here that we would highly recommend. Having multiple ADUs on the lot is also an option. The Affordable Homes Act doesn't require the city to allow multiple ADUs on a lot. We do have many condos, condos and multifamily properties in the city that are very interested and want to have an accessory dwelling unit, and so for fairness, want to allow multiple property owners on the lot to have an ADU. Our current ordinance allows one ADU per principal dwelling on lots with four or fewer units. And the proposed ordinance allows one as-of right, that's the requirement, and then any additional ADU would require a special permit. So this is actually something that's becoming more restrictive, and that's a requirement of the Affordable Homes Act. If we are going to allow more than one ADU on a lot, it is clear in the regulations that that is a shell require a special permit. And so what we're proposing here is a lot with five or fewer units may have one ADU via a special permit. So, you know, think about that number, because that does increase it, but we've seen, you know, property owners with five units in the building request this, so want the City Council and Planning Board to take into consideration the number. But that should be a discussion. And then if that second, third, fourth, or fifth ADU is a detached structure, we are able to limit the height on that, because it's not the protected use ADU. So we're proposing to have a maximum height of 18 feet for the detached special permit accessory dwelling unit. I'm happy to keep going or take questions, I know that was a lot of information.
Why don't you hold your question, also Watsonfeld, until she finishes with this.
So this is the, the last item is not a requirement of the Affordable Homes Act to have this language in here, but I think it's really helpful. I highly recommend having language regarding non-conforming lots, because 90% of the residential lots in Salem are non-conforming. And so this just creates transparency for the Inspection Services Department, the property owner, the neighbors, on what happens when you have a non-conforming lot and how to handle that. And so the language here is, again, we can't require a special permit, even if the lot's non-conforming. But what we can require is a Section 3 finding. So essentially, the property owner would still go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, but it's not a special permit. It would still be advertised, it'd still be a public hearing, and the Zoning Board of Appeals would have to make a finding by a simple majority that the accessory dwelling unit will not be substantially more detrimental to the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. So again, no special permit requirement, it's that Section 3 finding. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Amanda, you also have one more, shows the data over the years, and I think, in fairness to people who are asking questions, I may want to see the numbers on the history of the ADUs in the city.
Yeah, I'm happy to share that. I should have put this in case folks are curious or interested in the permitting history of accessory dwelling units. So active building permit, that means that an application for a building permit has been filed for an accessory dwelling unit, and it really covers a whole bunch of stages. It doesn't mean that the building permit's approved. So within that active permits, that includes permits that are applied for, permits that are approved, ADUs that are under construction are included in that list as well. So we have 22 active building permit applications. Certificate of Occupancy means that it's complete. They have a certificate of occupancy and can occupy the accessory dwelling unit. So there are 14 total since 2022, and you see the breakdown by year. And then there were a couple stopped, and those were because the application was incomplete or they filed the wrong application. So really, it's a total of 36 accessory dwelling units that are either built or in the works.
Thank you. From the City Council, Council Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Presnisky. I now have two questions that I'm hoping Amanda is able to answer through you. The first, if I can remember my questions, if we could go back a couple of slides, do you mind to the, the number of units? Slide 12, by the looks of it. Thanks. So if I understand, I'm just trying to figure out how this would then interact with other, other ordinances we have, specifically the short-term rental. So if we were to allow multiple ADUs to be built on a property, and one, you know, and the owner moved in, and they now have an unoccupied building with five units, could they short-term rental all five of those units in the building and still consider it owner-occupied under our current STR ordinance? I think they can, if it's attached.
No.
Even if it's attached?
The, the ordinance in front of you tonight, and our code of ordinances states, accessory dwelling units cannot be short-term rentals, and...
They wouldn't be if they were permanently lived in by the owner?
Correct. It is specific that accessory dwelling units, regardless of who lives there, cannot be a short-term rental.
That's not my question. My question is, the accessory dwelling unit is now lived in 100% of the time by the owner of the property?
Right.
So now there are available units in the building to which the accessory dwelling unit is still the primary structure.
So this question came up the last time we talked about accessory dwelling units, and is really, is such a great point, and that's, this council, and I think through recommendation of the Planning Board, actually included, short-term rentals as, are prohibited in both the accessory and the principal dwelling unit, to make sure that doesn't happen. So if there's an accessory dwelling unit, that means the principal structure attached to that ADU can also not be a short-term rental.
Thank you for clarifying. Then the next question I have over on the next slide, which is the non-conforming properties. I am trying to wrap my head around this one a little bit. Accessory dwelling unit will not be substantially more detrimental. I don't know how this is legal, given the allowed uses that we're now building into the ordinance because of the state law change. Like, this seems like a restriction that goes, that's contrary to the state's purpose. Am I misinterpreting?
Yeah, this is, it's, again, it's not a special permit, and it's allowing the accessory dwelling unit, provided that there's a finding that it's not more detrimental, and this is in the situation where the law or building is non-conforming.
So I guess, I guess I'm confused, because I, we can't have a special permit on the development of an accessory dwelling unit?
Correct.
Okay. So this is now, could this, could the rejection of this by majority vote cease the development of an ADU on this property?
Yeah, it's a simple majority vote, and if the zoning board votes against it, the accessory dwelling unit, as proposed, would not be able to be built.
So, to invert the language for my brain, right? That means that an application would be open, it's a non-conforming property, it would have to come before the ZBA for a decision, right? Not a special permit, but a decision. And that decision could be to deny the building of that ADU on that non-conforming lot.
It's treated like any other Section 3 protected use, where the zoning board, we can require a finding from the zoning board for that protected use if the property is non-conforming. Make sure. Yeah, Robin can respond to this as well.
I appreciate it. It's a tricky one.
Go ahead, Robin.
So, this is an area of law that's particularly, oh, sorry. So this is an area of law that is particularly confusing all of the time, not just in the context of ADUs. So there's a separate part of the Zoning Act, it's General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6. There's a lot in it, but in the first paragraph, it talks about how communities can treat existing non-conforming structures. So what this language is really getting at is not an evaluation of the use of the ADU, but of the structural change necessary to accommodate the ADU. And in a normal instance, if you have an existing non-conforming, single or two-family home, it's in one legal bucket under Section 6. If you have any other kind of structure, it's in another legal bucket under Section 6. So most of the time, what we see in the city are existing non-conforming, single or two-family homes that folks want to make changes to. And the way the normal process works under 48.6, which you see referenced here, is an initial determination gets made at the building inspector, zoning enforcement level, as to whether or not the change that's being proposed is not a per se increase, but an actual intensification in an existing nonconformity. So there may be instances where, for example, you have a single-family house on an undersized lot, and the proposal's simply to make a minor change, to add a dormer or something like that. That isn't something that necessarily has to be sent on to the zoning board, that's something that you might be able to say, "This is so minor, we're not really intensifying our nonconformities, and this is something a building permit can issue for." If it's something more significant, then it normally gets sent on to the zoning board. The legal standard that you see here, the not more detrimental standard, comes right out of Section 6 of the Zoning Act. And communities are allowed to do that by a finding, which would just be a normal, simple majority vote, or they're allowed to treat it for process purposes like a special permit, which requires a supermajority vote. Your ordinance already requires the special permit, which is the simple majority vote. We've taken a look at the new ADU provisions, 48.6, and case law involving mainly educational uses. For example, there's a Boston College case involving... case involving a finding under 48.6, which was allowed to be applied to an educational use, which is protected by 48.3. We looked at all of that. We've analyzed it. You know, my opinion, and until we get more guidance from a court otherwise, is that nothing about the Affordable Homes Act changed 48.6. So 48.6 is still going to apply in instances of existing nonconformities. So again, this will only come into place if a lot or a structure is not conforming. And when we say on there that the accessory dwelling unit will not be substantially more detrimental, what that means is the structural change to accommodate the accessory dwelling unit. So perhaps, you know, if there's concern about that, that's something that'd be clarified through this process. But what we're really saying is that the structural change, alteration, expansion, what have you, would not be more nonconforming. And there may be instances where, you know, and this is a balance to protect existing homeowners, you know, there might be situations where somebody comes in and says, well, I have an existing structure, it's right on my property line, I want to go up. And they come to the zoning board, and the board says, well, why can't you keep it one level and go to the left, or something where, you know, perhaps, you know, you get a different project. It's not necessarily a no to the use, it's not a judgment on the use, it's an application of law that exists to handle structural changes and alterations in existing nonconformities. So really, what's being evaluated is the structural change, and, you know, it's not necessarily a given. I would say it's a tighter process. That's why we've been clear that it's by that three fifths finding standard, not the normal special permit standard. I expect that we're going to have a challenge somewhere, and we'll get some case law, or we'll get some guidance on this. But, you know, like I said earlier, when the EOHLC is passing regulations, they have to do it within the scope of the law itself. This is part of the zoning act that wasn't changed by the Affordable Homes Act. So in my opinion, it's appropriate to apply it, honestly, even if you didn't say this. My opinion is that 48.6 would still apply to existing nonconformities. And as Amanda said, this is just kind of reminding everyone of that and putting them on notice. But what you're evaluating is not the use of the ADU per se, you're evaluating the structural change to accommodate it.
It's the process to approve it, or the process to, it would be really about the process to disallow it in this instance, not the use, but the structure itself.
Yeah, I mean, this really, yeah, again, this is not a judgment on, do we want to allow the ADU? It's a consideration of, you know, we already have a significantly undersized lot that's very built out, it's already maybe over lot area coverages or setbacks. And so it does provide a measure of protection to abutters. And like I said, I think 48.6 should and will apply on its face anyway. This isn't changing that at all. It's just making clear that the special permit requirement that's in your existing ordinance won't apply to ADUs. It'll just be the finding the statute has.
That's really helpful. And just as a quick reminder, Amanda, when you walked through this, you said this was also a public process. So this was a public process where ZBA would do so in a public meeting, public comment, et cetera. Okay, great. Thank you.
Council Cohen.
Thank you, President. I'm somewhat conflicted through the, all the ADA iterations we had about owner occupancy. So I understand that we can't require that. But can we create some kind of like, like a delay, like to say that we, the owner occupancy could only happen after so much time?
No, it's the statute itself, not just the regulations that prevent that.
Council Musillo.
Thank you, President. Just to go back, Amanda, did you, did you say that 90% of properties are nonconforming?
Residential, 90% of the residential lots. We did an exercise a couple of years ago through GIS, so that was high level, yes.
Okay. Can you also talk a little bit about how this is affecting homes in historic districts?
Sure. So the historic districts, the local historic district, the demolition delay ordinance, those all still apply, just like it would for any other structure. So if an ADU is proposed in a local historic district, it would go through the historical commission.
If, if the proposal was to build an addition on to the house, or to build a separate structure, can the historical commission deny that?
They would apply the standards as they would to any other structure, if it's, if you can see that structure from the right away.
Thank you. And then my last one was the trees. Any other zoning that talks about how many trees maximum you can remove in order to build in Salem? Do we have any tree restrictions on anything else?
We have a tree ordinance that's, yeah.
I mean, the way this was written, that said, you know, you could, you could have your ADU as long as you don't remove X, up to X number of trees or whatever. Is that, we don't have that anywhere else, do we?
No, that is not in any other part of the zoning ordinance.
Council Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. It also caught my attention, the 90% of residential lots in Salem being nonconforming with this as well. So even though a special permit will now isn't required, it sounds like in summary, there is still going to be, you know, a barrier, a lengthy process for almost everyone that applies to do this. And would you say that's, you know, the ramifications of the fact that Salem, 90% aren't? So there will, there will be a process in place for almost everyone? Is that how that can be interpreted?
Yeah, and the nonconformance vary. If someone's proposing an accessory dwelling unit in a basement that's not bumping out the structure at all, you're within the existing home, that's an easier determination to make. But if, if you're adding on to the structure, that's where it gets a little tricky. But there could be a nonconformity in terms of, in terms of lot area. That's what we see most often, where, you know, in R1, the 15,000 square feet, or a lot of the homes in Salem, or a lot of the lots in Salem are closer to 5,000 or 6,000 square feet. So it's just our zoning was created after the lots were built for most of the city. But I don't, I don't see it as a barrier, because again, you saw that list. We have, in 2025, we have 13 active building permits, and 20, and we have three certificate of occupancies. They're being built. And so we do see them trickling in.
Thank you. And to follow up with that, the language of being detrimental, so that's kind of subjective to the opinion as opposed to, you know, hard and fast, you know, restrictions on size and where it is in location, that can just be looked at and determined kind of holistically?
Yeah, it's determined by the zoning board of appeals. And, you know, they do a really great job at looking at the surrounding neighborhood, and it's listening to public comment as well, with folks that come out. But it's, it's looking at what, what does the, what does the neighborhood look like? What is the existing, what is the existing nonconformity of that property? And are you increasing that?
Okay, thank you. That does add some clarity.
Council Habe.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I guess my question is, what is the reasoning for it being nonowner occupied? Because the way I look at it is, when I purchased my house, I purchased it in an R1 zone. Now, it just seems like the single family zones or the R1 is basically, by not being owner occupied, an investor can come in and buy a house and rent both the ADU and the house out. And now my, and the whole parking issue, and my, what I purchased when I was looking to buy my house is not, now I'm in like an R2 zone. And I didn't want that. I wanted a single family place. So I'm just trying to grasp my, you know, put my head around why, all of a sudden, I mean, why have an R1 zone if we're going to allow everybody to just throw two units in wherever they want?
I will note that, you know, zoning is, is not supposed to dictate tenure. Ownership first rental is really looking at use and, and dimensional standards and the, and the build out of the environment. So, you know, through zoning, we couldn't say that a property cannot be, or a planning board decision, let's say we're going through a project, we can't say this project shall be ownership. We want to see condos here, or we want to see rental. A developer can make that choice, but we can't dictate that. That's just not a power through zoning. So it was interesting to me that we were allowed to previously have owner occupancy. But again, that's a requirement from the state that's specific in the legislation, that we cannot require owner occupant, owner occupancy.
Any further discussion from the council? I'll turn it over to Chair Reader from the planning board.
Thank you, President Prozinski. The one comment that I would make is to ask that the ordinance provides some definition with regard to how height is measured, because there is no such thing as a quote, flat, quote, parcel within the city. So in order to avoid consternation in the future, whether it's measured at the short end or the tall end of a structure, and to what point, is it the peak of the gable, there, we could unpack, and I could spend too much time talking about. So I will yield back to anyone. Helen.
I have, I'm reacting to Jay from my professional standpoint, which is that to, to wait until the point of certificate of occupancy, to find out that you can't build that is crazy. And if there's no special permit being applied for by a homeowner, this, it would, I, I mean, I agree with this. I want this to happen. I want this to pass. But I think that how is it that an owner is to know that they are, that they will find out down the road that they will, they cannot occupy this thing that they've spent the money to build? So you're going at it in a, in a reverse order that needs to change, I think, because every, because I do a lot of additions and renovations in historic districts and all over the city, I'm very well aware, and I spend a lot of time going to the zoning board, and it's almost always special permit. And it's if you do not increase the nonconformity, you get approval. But if that's removed, how are people to know? So I think it's an important thing to, to think through about that.
Thank you, Helen. Anyone else on the planning board with questions or comments? Seeing none?
I will return it to you.
President Prozinski.
I will now open it up for public comment. If anybody is appearing in favor, take the microphone. Anybody in Zoom land appearing in favor? Seeing none. Anyone in opposition? Mr. Whittier, go ahead and take the podium.
Justin Whittier, Ten River Street again. I just want to point out, I think something people are missing here, is that if you're going to accept the EOHLC's definition of what this law says, you're not doing it right now. What you're doing does not follow the law, because you're not including B2, B4, or industrial in here. The reason why you have to, if you accept the EOHLC definition, is that it says, anywhere a single family use is allowed as of right, or by right, as we say here, or by special permit. Now, this is different from what we were hearing from before, so not to confuse things. But if you have an existing nonconformity in a zone, you can change that via special permit. So if you're in a B2 or a B4 or something, you have an existing nonconforming use, you can go and you can have that changed to a single family use. And you're not providing for that here. So again, that just goes to show, but as I said before, you're changing something that was applied by the state legislature in absolutely clear and distinct language to be a certain district. If you want to know what a district is, you look at our zoning map, because they're deline, have to be delineated there by law. And you're applying it by this logic everywhere, to every zoning district. Again, because it's as of right or by special permit. That is clearly not what the legislature intended. And I think everybody can recognize that. I mean, it should be pretty obvious. I think there's also a little confusion that I was hearing before. In terms of zoning districts, I think hopefully everyone understands that what they do is create maximums. So for instance, R1, the maximum is one dwelling unit, R3, the maximum is three. Obviously, that doesn't mean you can't have a single family or a two family in an R3. So if you are confused by the idea of my argument meaning that you could know, you couldn't have ADUs in all these other districts, no, of course not. We allow that now. That's what's on our books. The difference is that what we're being asked to do is to remove certain prohibitions and restrictions. So that's what we're talking about. We're talking about sort of broadening what's allowed and removing the protections that are on the books for how we do ADUs. My point, again, is that, yes, the state passed a law to say, we want to remove certain prohibitions and make it easier to create an ADU. But they said it as clear as can be about only in single family zoning districts. If they wanted it to apply everywhere, they would have said so. It would be so easy for them to say, in any residential zoning district, we want to remove these things. In anywhere this use is allowed, we want to, they did not. They said a zoning district, a zoning district is very clear. If you have a single family home in an R3 district, that doesn't change what that district is. If you have a nonconforming R3 in a single family district, that still doesn't change what the districts are. Districts are portions of land that are clearly delineated, put on a map. That's what they mean. That's what this law means. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the City Council? Council Musillo?
Thank you, Chair. Could we get some clarification on the zoning for, for the B2 and the B4 and the industrial for a single family, please?
I think that's a me question.
So the law actually rec, oh, sorry. So there are two different kinds of special permits when we talk about zoning laws. One of those is what we consider a use special permit. General law, Chapter 48, Section 9, allows communities to indicate that certain types of uses are allowed by special permit. And so when we look at the definition that EOHLC has, and it says a single family zoning district is anywhere that a single family dwelling is allowed as of right or by special permit, to me, that means, if you look at your use table, it's either a yes or an SP. Now, as I mentioned earlier, when we talk about the findings that you can do under 48.6, there's a body of case law that says that you can make those special permits for process, essentially. So the standard that gets applied is the 48.6 finding not more detrimental standard. But by calling it a special permit, you can change the necessary vote from three fifths to four fifths. You attach all the process that comes in 48.11 with doing a special permit and an application and a public hearing and all of that. And that's what you've done. But there's also a body of case law that maintains that line between when something is procedurally a special permit and when it's substantively a special permit. So in my opinion, the fact that in Section 3.3 of your zoning ordinance, there is a mechanism for obtaining a special permit, which in my opinion falls under 48.6 as one of those procedural special permits, to change from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use, does not render every district in, in the city, a single family zoning district, because you theoretically, under the guise of going from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use, could ask to have a single family, what we're talking about, when we're talking about that definition, as I read it, in my opinion, as I understand zoning law, would be your 48.9 use special permits. So I don't think that the mechanisms for altering existing nonconformities grabs every zoning district as being a single family. I think you look at your use table.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion from the planning board? Anyone on Zoom? Mr. Laffey, you have the floor.
Take your question. The only concern I have is the, I don't believe the gate for giving a tax exemption is high enough. When I say high enough, I really mean low enough. Because I believe you said it's going to be 70% of the fair market value. The fair market value, for example, of a single bedroom, a one bedroom is $23.94 in Salem. I'm a landlord. I wish I got $23.94 for my single bedroom apartment. I don't. If you take 70% of that number, it's about $16.75, which is not much more than what I currently I currently get. And I don't get a tax exemption. So 900 square feet is about half the size of my house. The, if you look at the value of my house, of the building, the city is going to lose proportionally about $2,000 a month in tax revenue for giving away something that isn't much lower than real market value here in Salem. I know this because I'm a landlord. So I'd like to see that 70% be gated higher at maybe 50% or 40% to really make it affordable and make it worth, more worth our while. You know, it's kind of like what we do with ties with development, where we, we look at AMI and 60% of AMI to give tax incentives. When I had a conversation with the attorney that represented the developer at Shetland Park proposal, he was delighted to hear what I charged for rent and the fact that I am actually below that threshold. So he was like, wow, that's, that's amazing that, you know, the fair market, it seems like the market value here in Salem is within the range of what we, what we would be able to get for tax incentives. So it's really discouraging to me that the city would want to give away this kind of money in tax revenue for something that you're not going to get a lot more affordability of. And I do appreciate Ms. Counselor Harvey's comment. I kind of feel the same way, being in an R1 and overcrowding and all that, but I understand it's state law and there's not, not much we can do about that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none. Councilor Hapworth, would you like to close the public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Prozahnuski. I move the public hearing be closed.
Councilor Hapworth, we move that the public hearing be closed. All those in favor? All those opposed? Chair Reader, your turn.
Thank you, Council President. Are there any follow-up questions or comments from the Planning Board seeing no, looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
And if we could have a show of hands, it's looking seven.
It's a, or plus the seat juror, it's closed, public hearing. Back to you.
Thank you.
The unanimous vote, the public hearing is closed. Councilor Hapworth?
Mr. President, I move the matter be referred to the Planning Board for their review and recommendation.
Councilor Hapworth, now moves that this matter be referred to the Planning Board for their review and recommendation. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Hey. On.
We have now.
It's the third subject. Go ahead, Adam Clark.
We have the Halloween Park in Overlay District.
First. Everybody, welcome.
Not going to stick around for this, Robin? Okay. Good evening, councilors, members of the Planning Board. It's April, so we're here to talk about October. So as many of you may recall, we, we do, I do have some brief slides just to kind of cover some of the key points here. As you may recall, we adopted an overlay zone a few years back to regulate the use of private property for public parking in the month of October. Now, we now have a couple of years of experience with that approach, and I think that we felt there was time to revisit it, to share some concerns that we heard from the staff responsible for enforcing it and from the members of the public, and really offer an opportunity to have a discussion about an alternative proposal to make some modifications to that. So we really have, I think, a few options before us as a community when it comes to regulating the use of private property for, for public parking. We can continue with the overlay zone, which I think, as I'll demonstrate in a moment, doesn't really work well for us. Or we can adopt a modified version, which we're proposing, or we can really prohibit the use outright. And from an enforcement standpoint, all three require enforcement. But the final option really doesn't do anything to solve some of the challenges we have from a policy standpoint, nor does it, I think, treat some of our commercial businesses and residents who suffer the impacts of October in a way that is really fair. So just to level set a little bit about our current parking situation, this is pulled from the most recently completed Park Downtown Parking Study. And I should say, we have the Assistant Transportation Director Christina Hodge with us this evening as well. The Building Commissioner wasn't able to be here, but she provided some additional data for us. So we have roughly around 3,000 old parking spaces, based on the most recent numbers that were provided from that count, 2,200 in city lots, garages, and meters in the downtown zone, and an additional 710 in the parking garage. In addition to serving the visitors to Salem, these 3,000 spaces also serve all the employees that work downtown, Salem residents that come downtown to conduct business, and residents who live downtown that rely on them for their, their daily use. And what we can see, if you've been downtown in October, is that when the parking fills up or approach is filling up, that most of the people who have arrived in private vehicles tend to either circulate around the downtown until they find something that is open, which contributes to congestion and the vehicle emissions in the downtown, or they just get discouraged and they park illegally in neighborhoods, in places where we have resident parking protections. I did look at trying to provide some data around the number of visitors. This is from the placer system that we've had access to, which uses the aggregated cell phone location services data to estimate crowd sizes. We pulled out two dates, Halloween itself, this past year, where we had just over 87,000 people downtown. So that's 30 visitors per parking space. We can go back one slide, sorry. And then October 12th, which is actually the, the highest visitation date that we had this past October, where we had 118,000 visitors downtown. So that's about 40 people per parking space. Now, if you can go to the next slide, Maureen, thanks. Obviously, not everyone comes by, by car. This is not really formatted, so you can see the legend at the bottom, but yeah. It's all right. So roughly, so we know the number of people who ride the shuttles. We know the number of people who ride the ferry. And thanks to the MBTA, we also know the number of people who ride the train. So October 31st this past year, about a quarter of the people that came into downtown Salem arrived by train. 2% took the shuttle, 2% took the ferry. And the remainder came, it says car here, and to be completely fair, it's car and also coach buses. We don't know the number of people who come by coach bus, but you're looking at seven and 10 people arriving in a vehicle of some kind that's then either dropping someone off or looking for parking downtown. Can go to the next slide, thanks. So the current overlay zone, as you may recall, is the B5 plus a quarter mile around the B5. It is a fairly arbitrary geometry, was, geography was designed to really capture the area where we think the, the most number of cars were, were kind of stuck in that death loop of circulating around as they looked for parking. And what we encountered over the last couple of years of implementation is that there are places where there's parking activity, there's parking available or interested parties that would like to provide that parking, really just on the other side of that zone. And since this was really an arbitrary design, those people were excluded, not for any good reason, then they were just, you know, a quarter of a mile plus a few feet outside of the B5. We've run into some inconsistencies around the application of this overlay to commercial and residential parking. So many of the tickets that were given for zoning violations, even within the overlay zone, were at residential properties, which caused confusion and cost the number of residents several thousand dollars to figure out that problem. And then lastly, is they require substantial staff time. So the current ordinance has a permitting process that requires the Transportation Department to go through a permitting exercise with an applicant to identify whether the property is within the zone, to verify the property is compatible with the regulations, and to issue the permit. And then the Building Inspector's staff, same staff who are enforcing our building code, our accessibility code during the busiest time of year in October, are also now going out to see whether or not that person has an A-frame in their driveway and selling their two parking spaces and then giving them a $300 ticket. They issued 73 tickets this past October, which in my read of the use of staff time in October for our building department is not a great use of their time. So what we're trying to achieve here is to propose something that would create some reasonable regulations on this kind of use and to create some additional parking capacity. We've, I think we've heard a lot, and we will as we talk about the zoning amendments related to parking minimums, this concept of induced demand, that if we provide parking, it's just going to draw off more people here. But as we've clearly seen, year after year, people are driving to Salem. Fewer people maybe than in the past, but enough people where they are continuing to park illegally in neighborhoods and they are continuing to jam up downtown streets waiting for a space to open and allot or a garage. The permitted lots of this past year, there was 26 of them. They added about 1,400 parking spaces to our capacity. So it wasn't tens of thousands more. It was, it was a limited number. But even that limited number substantially contributed to our ability to take those cars off the street as quickly as possible so they weren't adding to congestion, emissions, or parking problems. Our other goal is to minimize resource drain. So I mentioned, whether we keep the current overlay, change it somehow, or eliminate it altogether and just say this is not allowed to use, we're still going to have to conduct enforcement of some kind. We're trying to, in this ordinance, propose a registration system that's a little less labor-intensive for staff than the permit, and also have a much simpler set of rules so it's easier to apply. And I just want to emphasize, if the decision is to say this is prohibited citywide, that people cannot rent out where our legal parking spaces for a use that is not related to the primary use of the property, we still have to enforce that. And now we have to enforce it everywhere, every time we get a call. And so I get very concerned about our staff capacity to be able to do that. To general uniform application of this across the city, so like I said, the geography was arbitrary. We're proposing that we just create one standard. Naturally, that more of this use is going to take place closer to the downtown. But just because somebody has available parking one block over from where it's on might be why they should necessarily be excluded, I don't think is fair or equitable to them. And I also think that if we have the opportunity to potentially intercept cars before they even get to the downtown, that actually contributes to traffic relief in our downtown October. Before the City Council separately, we had filed a home rule petition for a special act that would allow the city to assess a surcharge on these parking spaces. The proposal in that home rule petition is $2 per space per day that the spaces are offered. And those funds would be directed to our Transportation Enhancement Fund, which supports the skipper, supports our bike share program. The idea is that, that this, these parking fees would go to support things that would encourage non-vehicle travel. And then lastly, would enable residents and especially businesses who don't necessarily traditionally benefit from October tourism or see any kind of financial benefit from, from our visitor economy, to generate some additional revenue of their own. You know, we ask the people of Salem to put up with a lot in October. And if, if somebody wants to generate a little extra income of their own, of their property in October, certainly enough people in the city are trying to do that in other ways. It seems fair to, to give them, to afford them the opportunity within reasonable regulation to be able to do that. Next slide, thanks. So we're maintaining the limited time and effect in this proposed ordinance, which is the Friday preceding October 1st to the Monday following October 31st. It eliminates, as I said, the zone and just creates a single regulation across the entire city. The one exception is for residential parcels on streets that have resident parking protections. Those are annual resident parking and the October resident parking. And the reason for this is probably best demonstrated through a hypothetical. If you think of two neighbors on a resident parking protected street, one has a driveway and one does not. If the one with the driveway has the ability to rent their driveway out and they place their car on the street, it deprives that on-street parking for their neighbor who doesn't have the ability to put their car in the street and is effectively the same as putting a visitor car onto a resident park, a resident protected street. So we're proposing to exclude those streets from, from this, this program. Clarifies that this applies to residential and commercial properties alike. Similar to the past ordinance, it authorizes the Transportation Commission to create regulations around legal parking spaces, prohibitions on subleasing, selling, or assigning the ability to rent the space out. As I said, it requires a registration with the city. The $100 annual registration fee is equal to the current permit fee for the overlay zone permits. And then it does provide for violations. So in addition to the zoning violations, which would be up to $300 per day per violation, which is standard for zoning, it, the regulations could also disqualify that property from being able to register in future years and participate in the program. I think that concludes the presentation. I am happy to take questions from members of the council or the board.
Councilor Harvey?
Thank you, President Prozahnuski. I'm just curious as to, if we're going to open up residential areas for parking like that, if we could put a time restriction? I mean, it's one thing if the people are parking downtown or in the garage or something like that and they leave late, but now you're allowing people to rent their driveway. And who knows what time these people are going to be coming back to their vehicles, whether they've been in one of the barrooms. I just, if that permit was allotted for those people, just put some sort of time restriction that the, the vehicles have to be out of there by a certain hour.
Thank you. Councilor Merkel?
I'm happy to, may I respond?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think we could explore that in the zoning. That seems like something that would be very appropriate for a regulation, when they create the rules around the program, that you could place those kinds of controls around the time.
Councilor Merkel?
Thank you, President Prozahnuski. Yes, I understand the idea of getting rid of the arbitrary red line. That had never sat well with me. I knew two churches that were on each side of the line and the law would be different for them. But just a couple of comments on allowing, you know, resident, residential properties to rent out their, their driveways and parking, that we are trying to move away from encouraging more cars downtown and someone who's right downtown. I have actually seen our efforts to get people to take public transportation and the shuttle. I've seen it pay off. I've seen there be some less congestion downtown from these efforts. And just trying not to be so car-centric. And I've watched more people pouring off the trains and they're adding more trains. I just would hate to see that reversed. And also, the idea, I understand that the regulation, you know, has taken up a lot of time between commercial being allowed and residential not. But I also see that as more parking spots that will need regulation, that will need more response, you know, from, from parking enforcement or the police, when there probably will be. I agree with the time restrictions, but people partying and coming here won't keep track. And then you might have a neighbor saying they're coming out of my neighbor's driveway all hours and night. I don't, I, I'm not sure I connect the dots that it will be less work for enforcement when we're adding so much more parking to regulate. I just see areas where it will be, it could be increased. And also, to that point, I think it's totally fair, the points about not having it for people that have resident parking, that, that's a very clear point. But I also think that's another area where it will get murky in that people will hear you can rent out your spots. And will they, they already didn't separate out, no, it's commercial that can, resident can't. Now they have a further, you know, it's further regulations to sort out that, well, no, this, you're still in a place where there's resident parking, so you can do it here, but not. I still think it's going to get stuck in the weeds and I don't quite see it resulting in, you know, less oversight. I don't know, I just, just, just some points I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. May I respond? So we're certainly not trying to make things more car-centric.
So we're certainly not trying to make things more car-centric and the message that I've been hammering home every year in October is to come by train, come by ferry, come by broom, don't come by car. We did see, I think, an incredible increase in train ridership this past year. Our satellite shuttle lots actually never filled up any single day. We had parking capacity that was, I think, better than it had been in the past. We still had tens of thousands of people coming by car. So this is, I think there's the world of, of, you know, what we want to have, which is more people coming by public transportation and what we're trying to manage, you know, in reality right now. And the reality is that we're still particularly, you know, particularly at a time when people are making trips without planning ahead, are going to, are going to come by car and not think about where they're going to put it when they get here. It's fewer than it has been in the past, but it's still not few enough that we can manage it with 2,000, 3,000 public parking spaces downtown, just on those really busy days. And on the, on the question of the enforcement, you know, I, I hear you on that. I would say that if we don't have a system of regulation, registration and regulation for an allowed use, and we just say it's not allowed, people are still engaging in this use. They were engaging in outside of the overlay zone, they were doing it at homes. All of those 73 tickets that the building department issued last year at illegal, you know, unregistered properties for this use were based on complaints that came in, that, you know, so people were complaining. And so if we say we're not going to allow it in residential properties, there are still people that will do it in residential properties and we're still going to have an obligation to respond to the complaint, go out there and give them a ticket. And so then we're in a position of both using that staff time for enforcement of the prohibition and we're going to a resident who's dealing with October in Salem and saying, here's a $300 ticket, sorry. It's, it, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't feel fair to the resident to do that. That's why I think we need to put some regulations around it and have some guardrails. But if it's an activity that's happening and is going to continue to happen and we're going to have to enforce it, I think that we, it's better for us to get ahead of it and have some kind of structure to that.
Also, Mosello.
Thank you, President. I have no problem with this. Most of the downtown is resident parking only, either October or year round, so it's not adding anything. In fact, most of the places I've seen selling their driveway spaces are downtown. So I, you know, I get the, I take the enforcement issue. Can we think of a creative way to have a fluorescent permit that is hung somewhere in the front window? Most of the complaints are from neighbors that are saying, my neighbor is selling his lot, is he allowed to do that? Like, and it's all either emails to the counselors or calling up the parking department and it's just, if there's something visible so that people know it's approved.
May I respond to you, Mr. President? That, yes, again, I think that's something that may be suitable for the regulation is to define what you have to display at the, at the lot. The other thing that we're considering, and I think I mentioned this actually in my cover letter with the submittal, but I didn't mention it this evening, is, you know, if we have that registration list, we can make it available to the public. I don't want to advertise where these spaces are, but because all of our complaints generally come, all of our enforcement actions generally come from complaints, if you're a resident and you have the ability to look up whether or not that person down the street is doing that in a way that's approved by the city, that might prevent you from calling in the first place, saves you the aggravation, it saves us the time of having to drive, have someone drive out there and check it out. So that's something that I think that, you know, is another option we could explore in addition to, to something that's on, you know, on the property. A lot of spaces are being rented out on apps as well, so they're not advertising them with A-frames or sandwich boards or posters. They're, they're doing it on things like Spot Hero, and so they could be selling their space and there's no visible indication that, that somebody's engaged in that activity.
Except their neighbors will know.
They'll know when the out-of-state plates.
Neighbors find out all that stuff. So again, if there's something fluorescent and visible so that everyone knows that this is okay, we'll just cut down on calls. I had, I had a question about the, the home rule petition that we sent in and it just occurred to me. And if you don't want to answer this, this is fine, but was the intention to collect this $2 fee on the lots that are used for like school fundraising and all of that? Are we excluding anything or?
I, I don't want to answer that without having the petition in front of me and I don't, I don't think that was the intention, but I want to double check that that's, that that's the case and make sure. I mean, many of the lots that happen, and like Universal steals the city lot, so it doesn't apply to that. But I would want to double check to, before I do that.
Thank you.
Also, Drosel.
Thank you, President. Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a great step in the right direction. There was a lot of confusion last year, especially in Ward 1, where people could go down to Bentley School and Park, but they were parking all the way down Fort Avs, the Teller Lane, all throughout the neighborhood. So I think this is definitely a step in the right direction. One resident asked me, where does the $100 fee go to? What is that?
So that offsets the staff time for conducting the registration process and maintaining the registry.
Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the parking blob is expanding to meet the needs of the parking blob, apparently. I think, I can remember a time when there was maybe three to five, maybe more properties, but a small handful of properties that we were receiving emails about that were, that were doing this before this law, before this ordinance was passed. I don't ever remember seeing anybody selling their residential spaces. I don't remember seeing signs in downtown Salem. Now they're, they're in my neighborhood, they're, they're, I see several when I walk around in October and September and November. We are creating, if there, if there were problems last year, the problems that we created as a city when we passed this ordinance. And I, I cannot see a situation where we are ever going to meet this parking need. If there's 118,000 people coming in, if there's 40 people per parking space, there's no possible way we'll even ever get close to meeting the need that people have to park. And I get that people will come in cars regardless and maybe we can't do anything about that. But what we can do with something about is, is we can encourage them to be looking for metered spaces, be looking for garage spaces, and if they can't find that, then, then too bad. But what we shouldn't be encouraging, and what this will undoubtedly do is encourage people to go into residential neighborhoods where we have families and people with kids trying to get to school, trying to walk around and circling, looking for spaces that we're not advertising. So they're assuming there's got to be a place here somewhere. I'm just going to keep circling and I'll go out further and for out further and I'm going to, I'm going to eventually find someplace to park. And I think that is the wrong message to send to our visitors. And I even question, I mean, I think if we're, if we're not meeting, we're not meeting a parking need, which I don't, I don't think this meets a parking need. We can talk about the need for more parking all, all we want, but I can never imagine that we're going to be able to meet all of this need that comes into downtown Salem. And this is a regulation need. And I get, I get the regulation concern because it's difficult to enforce this. We sent emails to Vula all season last year and I, I felt for her because there's no possible way she can get out there and enforce all that. But it's a problem that we have created on our own. And I even look at, you know, if we're to say resident-only streets are prohibited, how are we going to enforce that? And, and two years from now, we back again, talking about removing that restriction and just saying it's sort of, you know, October, we can't, we can't enforce it, we're just going to let people do anything to do. I think we have more conversations to have about this in Ola, but I, I think this is going in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Counsel Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Posniewski. I have a lot of things to say about this. I'm going to try and keep my comments tonight to the limit, or to a limit, I guess I should say. I agree with the comments of Counselor Hapworth. I think that, you know, when we first passed this, which again, I, I did not vote for, it was to legalize an illegal use that was being made, used anyways, because there was no way to enforce it. And so here we are now, this is legalizing an illegal use because we can't enforce it. And that seems like an us problem, not, not a, not a citywide resident problem. Now, but having been said, the conflict I have is that I know firsthand from residents in Ward 2, that they will do this anyways. I have been told on the phone by more than one resident who sells their, their private parking and has received violation tickets, that there is no way to prove that they're selling their, that their spots, that it's a private property that they can say and tell any agent of enforcement that this is a personal guest of theirs on their private property, that you can't prove they're taking money for it, and that they will tell that lie as long and to whomever they have to and never give up the $16,000 or more a year that they earn on those parking spots because their family depends on it. That was not a fun conversation for me. And it leads me to wonder how you think, even with the registration, which I like, right? Because now you have something to, it's like the Airbnbs. Now with a registry, you have something to cross-reference, right? It's easier to pop out illegal actors. That having been said, it doesn't solve the problem I just outlaid, which was prove it. Prove that this car on my private property is not a personal guest of mine who is out having lunch in the city. You can't prove it, right? So I hate this because it's kind of like negotiating with bullies, right? It's a little bit like you give an inch and the behavior continues, more is asked for, it gets worse. So, you know, one of the things that I like about this, if, if we have to do it, like pull all my teeth, if we have to do this, I like that it's citywide because that is equitable and that is fair and that has been a problem. And frankly, spread the wealth outside the downtown. Let's move that congestion into other neighborhoods, though I acknowledge the concerns of my colleagues for what that looks like in residential neighborhoods that are otherwise quiet after 5:00 PM, where kids are all at home having, having their bedtime on a Thursday night in October, right? I like the registry because I think at a minimum, it gives you some level of documentation. I like the idea that there's some visual indicator, but again, it's squeezing jello. People are going to do what people are going to do and enforcement is our problem. And it is this body's problem and it is born, unfortunately, by the residents. I am just going to say, I told you so. I told you so when we passed this last time, that we would be back. We, that, that arbitrary geography meant nothing and makes no sense. I still have not seen some of the comprehensive solutions that I've talked about in the past or suggested ideas around specific bus routes, additional shuttles and other parts of the city coming off of 114, not just through South Salem where it's highly accessible. Dedicated times, right? Dedicated areas, out, make it a donut, actually restrict parking that is not metered and not garaged in the downtown and enable parking citywide elsewhere. Invert the donut, as I said two years ago. I'm frustrated that this is in front of us without additional comprehensive conversations around other solutions that have come up. And I will say, I was encouraged by the recent conversation that we had around coach bus management. That having been said, again, we don't know how many coach buses are coming in and out of this city. We have not had conversations with private, these private commercial parking lot owners about maybe enabling those being spaces that they could sell for coach buses. There's absolutely no controls whatsoever and we're getting nothing for it, except the 50 step off the bus wherever they choose to be dropped by visitors who come into our downtown. So I think that's enough of a tirade for now and I'll save the rest for Ola. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I, can I respond to the last couple of comments?
Yes.
So I, I don't accept the notion that, that we're here because this ordinance failed. I think that we're here because this ordinance did not go, the, the issues that our enforcement people were dealing with weren't more cars. I mean, I, I think I said at the outset, we actually had fewer cars coming into Salem this year and more people coming in by train. The comprehensive solutions that we outlined in our past October after-action meetings to larger ferry, the additional base, the shuttle lots, we're trying to get the tour bus reform done, the variable parking rates, the variable message boards displaying parking capacity that have now gone into public messaging, have contributed to fewer cars coming into Salem. Where we are coming back to you now to change this ordinance is not because it has resulted in an increase in cars coming to Salem, we're actually seeing the opposite of that based on, on the data that I shared. Where we need to make these changes is the equity of where the geography is that this applies to and the fact that I don't think it's fair to go to a resident of Salem who is putting up with October in this city and say, you're renting out your driveway, here's a $300 ticket and take up that staff time. I think that the, the problem with passing the previous ordinance was it, it created a structure in which we are punishing the residents for trying to make money in October when everybody else, including the, the city, is trying to make money in October. I don't think that is expanding the parking blob. People are engaging in this activity already. And I think that if somebody decides that they're going to try to beat the game by saying that person is a visitor, you know, people are going to try to game every system. Our obligation is to try to find a structure that is as much of the time as possible, going to prevent as much of the bad behavior as possible and try to drive the policies that we want to see. I don't think that previous ordinance was perfect, but we are in a situation where it's an activity that people are engaging in. We can ban it and then we have to enforce the ban. We can allow it and regulate it and enforce the regulations. Either way, we're going to have to engage in some kind of enforcement. And I just don't, I don't, and I think that if, if, if one of the things that we have to consider in the balance is what's fair to the people of Salem, we're contending with October right now, that the idea of letting people try to make a little extra money in October and address the problem that we have with transportation is, is more fair to those people.
Just with a point on that around resident equity, I agree with that. It's, it's not fair to residents though, either, right? That, that a resident can take people's keys and valet them onto streets so that they can park even more than they have physical space for in their personal driveways. It's, it has actually caused harm to our tourists as well, who cannot find their cars or their keys and their keys are left in their cars when they come back at 11:30 at night. These are real stories. I agree with Counselor Hapworth that, that it's an impact on our residents as well to have people circling in our neighborhoods. That's all you see in October in downtown in Ward 2. So I understand, I, I do have to say, I disagree that this is not legalizing an illegal use. That is exactly what this is. And it's an illegal use that we can't enforce. That's it.
Also, Start.
Thank you, President Posniewski. I'm looking forward to the recap meeting. The three comments that I want to make will be pretty quick. Regulations, I know the first time we passed this, we wanted to see the draft of those. You made a few references to those this evening. I think that will be very helpful for us to review those also when we meet in Ola, especially if you're considering changing those. My other comment was about the registration fee, $100 per lot. I'm thinking $100 for a resident that has one spot that they're valeting out versus the HMA lot that has 700, like that doesn't seem equitable. I don't know if a tiered structure was considered at all for pricing. I don't know if that's legally an option, but I think that would be great to be considered because it seems with all this enforcement and process that we're paying into, we should be getting a little something back on that. And then my third comment is me speaking as a ward counselor. I appreciate this coming back to us. When this was here in front of us the first time, I supported it to try. I understand that ordinances are not something that we etch in stone and never change, but we needed to do something, so I appreciate that we wanted to try something. I did not like the lines of the blob, especially one of the, it kind of pieces of Ward 6 are in it and then right across the street, pieces of Ward 6 are not in it. Extremely inequitable and of course, all of like Franklin Street wanted to participate in it. Franklin Street basically became Halloween parking for the month of October. If anybody drove down North Street, you saw lots of signs. And the direct result of that was there were less cars circling in the neighborhood in North Salem. Without that, cars were circling, the, the amount of complaints of, you know, because we don't have Halloween restricted parking in North Salem and we don't have resident-only parking. So this really assisted us in, in keeping those cars from not circling because they just, as much as it killed me, they paid the $50 or I'm like, there's a city spot right next to it that you can rent for $2, but that's beside the point. So I appreciate the expansion of this. My last comment is the exception for, for the October parking and residential only parking. I would like to see a map of that when we have that conversation. I think it's pretty available because we just did that whole recap of it, but that's basically the downtown. So you are now only going to allow the rental of those spaces to those areas like Ward 6, North Salem, that we don't have any protections for our residents at all when it comes to street parking. So if we now say, you can park on the street and rent So if we now say, you can park on the street and rent, you know, your neighborhood, that is creating a problem that's not there now. And I'm not sold on that at all.
If I may respond to just specifically to the registration question. We did consider a tiered registration fee based on the size of the, of the parking areas. Really, the, the idea is that the registration is the collection of really basic information, contact information, number of spaces, address, you know, owner of record. And then, so whether it's, it's a 30 space lot or a three space lot, that information really isn't different. But where the home rule petition is seeking a fee based on the number of spaces made available to the public that is scalable based on the size of the lot. So that, that would be a reflection of that. And we can get the, the point taken on the draft regulations and then the map that the chief requested. I hear that. I think those are fair things to ask for.
Counselor Ola.
Thank you, President Presnisky. And thank you for bringing this in front of us. We all knew that this wasn't perfect when we had passed this about a year ago or over a year ago. I think that this levels the playing field for residents here in Salem and it should be allowed citywide. I just, I think that when it comes to Halloween, this is for one month. And you know what? You can't change the behavior of people coming into our city. They're going to drive around our neighborhoods. They're going to drive around downtown and getting them off the road as quickly as possible and allowing our residents to also participate in the program, I think is a step in the right direction. And we'll probably come back to this in a couple of years or next year. I am confident that when it comes to the regulations, that we'll figure this out and be appropriate. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President. I'm very supportive of this expansion. And all my reasons are related to each other. From a climate standpoint, when we first deliberated, someone actually said that, you know, cars that are parked create, you know, create more greenhouse gas emissions. My view is that the sooner that a tourist can find a parking spot, they will. And so if they're coming down Canal Street or Boston Street or whatever, and they find a place, they're not going down. From a discrimination and, and, you know, after buildings, which are over 50% of our greenhouse gas emissions, transportation is, is easily second, over 40%. From a discrimination fairness standpoint, Ward Five, we really got socked. I mean, I have John Rawls Insurance and Riley Plaza and, you know, the Richdale on Lafayette Street. But I have so many places on Canal Street that could accommodate this parking. And virtually any tourist that comes in, who gets onto Canal Street is going to be able to walk downtown. Okay? And none of those people, I mean, there's like so many of these single story businesses that have like eight or 12 parking spots, okay? And some of them actually donate some of the money to charity. So to Counselor Hapworth's point about circling, I, I am guilty. I am the number one circler of any resident in Salem. I, for health reasons, I can't really walk very far. I can't ride a bike. And today I probably drove around for three hours just to find a meter so I could go, you know, meet with someone in City Hall. Just a little aside, my wife and I went to the mall to go to a movie and she's like, you're not going to drive around for 45 minutes to find a close parking spot. I found one 12 spots away. We got out of the car all excited and I saw a squad open three spots from the door. And she's like, don't get in the car. So I just don't understand this idea that someone who is already downtown, the reason that people aren't using the O'Keefe parking spot and the high school parking spot and the shuttle as much is because once they're downtown, they're not going to go outside. They are going to drive around until they find a spot. And I think this is also about traffic mitigation. I mean, my ward is very small. It's basically Lafayette Street and Canal Street. And even today, people are trying to figure out which one of those should I get on? You know, Lafayette Street is already, after Highland Ave, the second most traveled street. And the idea that, you know, until we have the next train stop over there, that we can't enable people to get off the road there and outside of the, you know, the Ward Two downtown or the other, you know, areas. I just feel like people are going to find a parking spot as soon as they can. If you go to a Red Sox game, as soon as you see an opening, you know, whatever it is, $60, you, you do it. You don't like drive down there and then say, oh, go back to the one that's already there. So I think this will mitigate traffic, which is really good for residents and businesses who are struggling. And, and to the mayor's point, I really do feel like there's a lot of people who are not able to take advantage of the season as they would. Unless, you know, about residents doing it as, as businesses, but I accept that that might be a good concept. I just feel like this is something that I have too many businesses that are literally, as Counsel Merkel said, like on one side of the line and, and the other. And I'm thinking to myself, that's 65 spots. I mean, I just counted on Canal Street, just four businesses is over 60 spots. And there's going to be a new hotel. And they already did the study, you know, that the Brito Ice and Sammy's generates a lot of traffic in and out. Business traffic, people on the Sammy's getting piercing, whatever. People go to the hotel, what do they do? They go to the hotel, they don't then drive downtown. They walk around and do whatever. They're not going out to some other place in Gloucester or whatever typically. And that's the way I think about this. I think like you get to Canal Street, hopefully, and you park and then you walk. And I just think that this is a benefit. It's not going to fix everything. We're never going to have the solution to this. I just think this is the, the next best step. The, the, you know, we tried it. We've gone three years, I think. And now we're at the next place. And I think this is the next place. And it's, it's really going to, I believe it's going to benefit the residents and the small businesses more than anyone else.
Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, President. Is there, for instance, in the residential neighborhoods, not that this even pertains to my ward, because anybody that parks in my ward who walks downtown, they're better off just going to the high school and getting the shuttle. But as far as the neighborhoods, the residential neighborhoods in the area, I want to rent out my parking spot, so I want to rent out my driveway. But the rest of my neighbors are against it. Is there going to be some sort of approval process for this? Or is it, I mean, how does that work? Because not everyone in that neighborhood might, you know, might like this idea of somebody renting out their driveway because they don't want the traffic in the neighborhood at that point. So I'm just curious if there's going to be some sort of like approval process or if you get complaints from the other neighbors that, you know, they don't want it.
So through you, Mr. President, we're not proposing any kind of like discretionary approval process. It's you register the property. If you're not disqualified based on past violations, you'd be able to register the property.
Hey, Counsel Watson Bell.
Thank you. I'm just through you to the mayor. I'm can, I'm curious as to why you're still limiting this to just the Friday before October through the Monday after Halloween.
As opposed to making it year round?
As opposed to being anything more than that?
Because that's when we see the greatest demand for, for parking.
I think we see the greatest demand begin as early as the middle of August. So I don't know. I'm curious if you've done any studies around those numbers that you, that you showed in the, in the presentation that, that show train traveling and parking and vehicles in the month of September.
So we know the dates that the garage, typically garages typically fill up, which is like the, a fair proxy for when we're seeing this greatest demand on parking in our downtown. And September is not, is a busy time for sure, but we don't have the garages filling up until, well into October. The train ridership goes up as well. But I mean, the garages are a good proxy for parking demand.
So the plan would then be to still enforce illegal use of private properties for, for parking prior to those dates?
If it was happening outside of the, of any of the zoning ordinance, then?
It's happening. It's definitely historically happened consistently at Crossword Two.
Yeah, and I think people call and complain about it. You know, we have four building inspectors. And based on the availability of staff to, to respond to enforcement, they're going to make judgment calls about what they can respond to if it's being reported to the city. And that's why we had 73 violations issued last October. And I don't think it would be appropriate for us to hire an additional 20 or 30 inspectors just to do this and then have to cover the cost of those additional people. So that's, that's kind of the buy in the cities in from an enforcement perspective. If we choose to, to apply a blanket prohibition even in October on this kind of activity and then have to be in a position of responding to every single call for 73 plus the existing 26 permitted lots, plus however many people are doing it that we haven't been able to receive complaints about yet. We do not have the capacity to enforce 100% based on that. And I, I think that that's kind of one of the challenges that we're, we're looking at.
Thank you.
Counselor Mosello.
Thank you, President. Just a quick question. It's been my experience over the past two years since we've had this ordinance, and I know it's not related, that there is less traffic coming into Salem. It's visible on Highland Avenue. There are not long backed up lines on Highland Avenue or on Jefferson Avenue. People in the ward, especially those that live on Jefferson Avenue, are like quietly mention it because they don't want anything to change, that they can get in and out of their neighborhood with ease during October. So I know that's because we're pushing the train more. I know that that is going to continue, right? Like, okay. I, I guess I was surprised by this graph. I really expected there to be more train users because of that, because we're not seeing the, the traffic backups on the, on the quarters.
Yeah, so I think one of the things about that graph, October 31st wasn't a weekend. So they were running the regular train service for a weekday on that day. And we did try to get the October 12th ridership data. Wasn't, weren't able to get it in time for this presentation and we're going to keep trying to get it. The Ts are a little challenging sometimes to get data information from. But I think that on the weekends when they were running those more frequent train services, I would have had a higher percentage of people coming in by train. And I, just to your point around the, the streets, they are, they did, they also anecdotally felt more, less traveled this year to me as well. On the Saturday before Halloween, I was walking from where I live in North Salem to downtown and I walked out into the middle of North Street and just took a picture. I was not standing in the middle of the street. I don't know if the police are watching this or anyone, but went out and took a picture and took a video because there was just no traffic coming in. Not always the case for sure, but just I think anecdotally, as someone who's been working in the city for 13 years now for Octobers, it did feel like there was a lot less traffic. And still, based on what we saw with Placer data, more people.
Anything further from the council? Chair Reader?
Anyone on the planning board have a question? Seeing done.
Now open it up for public, a public comment. If there is anybody in the, in the public in support of this change, feel free to take, take the stand. We'll go from left to right. Ms. Curtin, please take the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Thank you for letting me speak. I've been here many times speaking about Halloween. So I'm here again. And I am a resident of the downtown area, very, very impacted by Halloween. Actually, I would say probably from now on, we'll be impacted.
Your address, please, Ms. Curtin.
Excuse me?
Your address, please.
Oh, excuse me, 35 Forrester Street.
Thank you.
I live in a three family condominium. I also have a little health issues myself. And being a mature person of over 80, I sometimes am forced to use the front of my house to go into my unit because I can't come in the back stairway. It's too steep. It's an old house. So I'm listening to what's happening tonight. And I agree with what Mayor Pangala was saying for the most part. I think it was wonderful what Counselor Cohen said. I do feel somewhat discriminated against in a small way that if I, oh, we have resident parking during Halloween time. That's the only time. But if I have to park in the front of my house, I'm going to be penalized for that because I can't go up the back stairs because of my health issues? That is something we have to consider, okay? And we have to consider, yes, I would agree. People are circling, they're circling, they're circling, they're circling, they're circling. We have people sitting on our front steps, having their dinner and their lunch and wanting to use our facilities. You know, so I mean, it, it gets, it gets, you know. And to say that we are impacted by Halloween, I can't say how much we are impacted on our street and our neighborhood. And then all of a sudden, well, wait a minute. We're out the zone, this zone or that zone or the other zone. So what do we do as someone, a mature person does? What do you do? I can't have my, any one of my 82 first cousins come to visit? I do have 82 first cousins. Can't have my kids come, my grandkids come? I don't know. I'm confused. It, it, I think Mayor has a good point. I'm, I'm all for it. I certainly support Halloween, but I certainly support, is any way that a few of us could perhaps mitigate some of the stress we have during the Halloween time? And also, it's nice that we can have so many kids come. That's great. $200 or $300 a year for Halloween candy. Okay, it's just what it is. So here we are. It's a, it's a, I was sitting here, it's a conundrum. I don't think there's any easy answer at all for all of us here in Salem. Really, I don't think there's an easy answer. And when I was hearing what Counselor Watson Felton was saying, yeah, people will do what they want to do. Fine, but I do feel you should consider the basic fact that those of us who reside in Halloween Central, which is this area, right in this area here, we need some consideration. We need consideration. And neighbors calling our neighbors, that, that just absolutely, you know, makes me want to cringe. Let me take up your time, but I really do feel that we should have a further public discussion about this. I do feel I would like to be part of a discussion. And we try to contact people and say, well, what do we do? What do we do? It's nope. But I do think, I think Mayor Pangala is correct in his assessment of many things. But this has got to have a further discussion for those of people who live in this downtown area. We live here, we reside here. We have to try to get out to go do our business. We have to have, sometimes those of us have to have health aides. And last year, I couldn't have a health aide come in because there was no place for her to park. So that's just a personal story that's not relevant to this discussion. But I do feel this has to have a further discussion by those of us that are most impacted. And I thank you. I hope we can consider this a further discussion. I really mean it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else appearing in favor?
Thank you, Chair. Anthony O'Donnell, 35, Washington Square. I wore my orange tie for Halloween a little early, but I did wear it in honor of Halloween. I think the, the presentation that the mayor gave and the answers were spot on. It's not a problem that's going to be fixed overnight. When I came here three years ago, some counselors questioned whether the ordinance would be back. And here it is, right? Because we're working together as a city to make it right. It's not going to be solved overnight. So we keep trying to change it, trying to make it better, trying to be equal and help everyone. I think, for an example, the city of Seattle, when they built a brand new football stadium downtown, they didn't have any parking garages or any allowable parking, except on Sundays. They allowed the businesses to open their lots. They allowed residents to use parking and that mitigated a lot of the parking and traffic issues. So I think when we run our lot, I run it like a business. I employ Salem High students. I employ Salem State College students, teachers that are on their weekend, retired people. So all of these people are benefiting from our Halloween tourism So all of these people are benefiting from our Halloween tourism that normally wouldn't. My business is affected. Families will not have services on the weekends in October and I have another location that some will still use or some will wait, right? So how fair is it to them? Because, you know, here we are in Halloween and they can't, you know, memorialize their loved one or they have to go to Danvers. And I'm lucky that I have Danvers. There are other funeral homes in the city that do not have another location to go to or they may, you know, in turn, go to another funeral home outside of town. So there's many issues, right? And those are things, I'm a resident, I've been a resident a long time and you just deal with it, right? It is what it is. You make the best that you can. And I think the last couple of years, I live on the corner of Winter Street and Washington Square, the traffic is mitigated. It was like, I was in shock when I was able to pull out of my driveway and be able to drive to Danvers or to come home. It took me the normal time. There was, you know, very little traffic. That being said, my lot was full every day, every time, except when it rained. So like the problem's still there, right? As we continue to push, take public transportation, take the train, it's going to continue to increase, which is great and that's going to help us get back to normalcy, but we have to, you know, mitigate the problem as best as we can for everybody. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else appearing in favor? Anyone in Zoom? Still, Lafayette, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Phil Lafayette, 143 Port Avenue, very much in favor of this. This popped up on my radar when in October, I visited the mobile station on Bridge Street and I was talking to the clerk who I know very well. And I said, well, you know, you must be having a good October with, you know, the parking. And he said, oh, no, we can't do it anymore. We, we, we got a violation. And this is, you know, Bridge Street on the way into downtown. I think it makes a lot of sense to allow people to profit off an allowable, for a space that is, is being used for what it's meant to be used for, right? These are parking spaces for vehicles. Confused by not allowing commercial parking lots on residential areas, residential parking areas. I'm thinking of like Rockets on, Rockets parking lot on Herbert Street, for example. If you had extra spots that you want to, to sell for October, why not? But I think this is a very, you know, makes a lot of common sense. One thing I would encourage actually is the use of apps like Spot Hero. So there's not a lot of signage in neighborhoods, park here, park there. You know, a yard sale sign is quaint for a couple of days while it's up, but a thousand yard sale signs for all of October saying, park here, 20 bucks, I think is obnoxious. So I would encourage that you would have to use an app. I think you'd be able to control time. I think you'd be able to control who's actually doing it with apps like that. So I, I am very much in favor of this very, very common sense solution to a problem. While it's not the end all be all solution, I'll, I'll very much agree with that. But I think it makes a lot of sense to let people who are impacted, you know, reap the benefit a little bit by making some, some, some extra money by renting out their spot for a use that it's really meant to be used for, right? Parking a vehicle. And if it's not being used as a resident, and I get that, why we don't want residents to take their, their car out of their driveway parking on the street, don't get me started with resident soul parking. I think that makes a lot of sense as well. But why not allow those commercial lots in those areas, allow the rental of those spaces? So I thank the mayor and the city for coming up with what I think is really a, a, a good common sense solution for part of the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else out in Zoom land? Seeing none? Any further discussion? Counselor Hapworth?
I guess, President, move the public hearing be closed.
Counselor Hapworth, who's the public hearing be closed? Chair, Chair Reader.
Further discussion or comments? And Sarah, show of hands, seven of seven. The public hearing is closed. Back to you.
All those in the council in favor of closing the public hearing? Madam Carrie, Madam Carrie's. Counselor, Counselor Mosello. I'm sorry, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move that the matter be referred to the planning board for their review and recommendation.
Counselor Hapworth moves on this matter, we move to the planning board. All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Carrie. Counselor Mosello.
Motion to adjourn.
Counselor Mosello moves. All those in favor? Yeah, adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Seven of seven.
Sorry, Karen, almost made it.